Okay, everybody, welcome to Lincolnshire County Council Planning Regulation Committee, Monday 2nd of December 2024, 10:30am. I'd just like to say that we are having one or two IT issues in the council at the moment, in that the wifi isn't working particularly well. And the knock-on effect, that is, we are having a little bit of a problem trying to live broadcast the meeting, so the meeting will be recorded and it will be broadcast a little later. Okay. So, I will move on and say that we've had the fire alarm checked this morning, so there should be no fire alarm going. There is water to the rear of the room for anybody in the room, and we are otherwise not expecting too many other interruptions. I think the committee are now nearly seated and happy.
I feel I should apologise, Chair, but I can't access my internet, so I've just got paper copy, thank you.
Just made the comment. Okay, so, item one is our apologies replacement members, and I don't know, I think we have councillor Hassan, councillor Pepper and councillor Neusia who are apologising today. I don't believe there were any replacements. Okay, so I'll therefore move on to item two, declarations of members' interests. Anybody wish to declare anything now, but you can later than me. Councillor Ashley Morris, please.
Thanks, Mr Chairman. It's the yellow lining one for Ashton Hall Drive in Boston. I've done a lot of work with one party in that, so I'd like to reserve the right to speak, but I do feel I should mention that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Item three is minutes of the previous meeting, this is the 4th of November, previously circulated. If you are happy with them. Councillor Skinner?
Happy to move them, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chairman, seconding, all in favour, please show. Just make sure everyone's awake and ready for business, yes. We're all there, so that's excellent. So, moving on then to traffic items, and we have quite a few traffic items this morning, so we'll see how we get on. Item 4.1 is Redwood Drive Waddington. Jan Gibson, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Jan Gibson, the Programme Leader for Traffic. The first report today is for waiting restrictions at Redwood Drive in Waddington. This is a school site, and there's quite a bit of congestion at school start and finish time, so we propose a number of measures, including waiting restrictions at junctions, a mandatory schoolkeep clear marking, and part-time restrictions on the west side to maintain traffic flow. So, a number of residents adjacent to the proposed part-time restriction have objected to the proposals as it restricts the times when they may park outside their properties, and they are concerned that it will displace parking into neighbouring areas, and that the absence of parked vehicles on Redwood Drive will lead to an increase in traffic speed. On-site monitoring has confirmed that the existing parking at junctions along the west side results in conflict between opposing traffic flows and compromises highway safety, particularly for pedestrians at busy times. The report recommends, therefore, that the committee considers the aims of these proposals and makes a recommendation to the Executive Councillor for Highways, Transport and IT, that the objections are overruled so that the scheme may be introduced as advertised. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, in our midst, we have councillor Tom Dyer. I believe you'd like to speak to this application.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and just some quick comments from me this morning. I know since I was first elected, I've had contact from hundreds of residents, I'm sure all of you have, about parking outside of schools, and specifically parking outside of Redwood Drive Primary School in Waddington. Due to the dangerous parking on the junctions there, often buses can struggle to navigate their bus route, often having to divert. Images of dangerous parking often appear on social media as well. It's been a long-running issue, and I, as I say, residents have been really, really keen for this scheme to move forward and be implemented. There are a number of objectors, and I've reviewed all of those objections, and as the local member, I'm very happy to liaise with them and discuss their concerns in further detail, as hopefully this is implemented in the near future. I think it's also important as well just to put on record that if this is formally approved by you good people this morning, I think it's absolutely incumbent on LCC to ensure that we have a presence of parking ward and to police this new regime as it's implemented and into the future. It's all well and good having yellow lines installed on junctions, but if we're not there to police it and make sure that all motorists and all vehicles are adhering to it, then they're pointless. So, I hope that you approve this this morning, but I also hope that LCC does its part in making sure that the roads outside Redwood Primary School are as safe as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dyer. Okay, so, committee, it's open to you. Would anybody like to comment? Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chairman. As the local member is clearly in support of this, and having got a similar issue in my own patch, which is currently being investigated for very similar reasons, more than happy to propose the recommendation as written, Chairman.
Councillor Skinner?
More than happy to second it. I think the local member has explained the situation quite eloquently, and we need to be supporting schemes like this, so I'm very happy to second, thank you, Jim.
Councillor, Mrs Overton?
Thank you. Just looking at the five objections, and they said more on the west side, because I guess those people will need to find somewhere else to park. Is there some suggestions about that? Where will they park? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Overton. So, the restrictions on the west side will only apply between 8:00 and 9:30 and 2:00 and 4:30 Monday to Friday, so although that will inconvenience residents at those times, most of the time they will still be able to park outside their properties.
Okay, so I have no further speakers. It's proposed by councillor Smith, seconded by councillor Skinner, that the recommendation as printed on page 11 is adopted. All in favour, please show. Okay. Are those against? Abstentions. One abstention, otherwise everybody was for, so that's therefore carried. 4.2, Meadow Lane, North Hycam, proposed 40 mile an hour speed limit. Jan, please.
Thank you. So, this report relates to a 40 mile an hour speed limit proposed on Meadow Lane. As shown in Appendix A, this is a busy rural link between North Hycam and Brant Road areas. An assessment against the speed limit policy has confirmed that the criteria are met for a limit to be introduced here, and subsequently a 40 mile an hour speed limit has been subject to the consultation process. One objection has been received, raising a concern that this level of limit is too low and may be disregarded by many drivers, thereby increasing the risk of collisions owing to overtaking manoeuvres. However, given that the approval for a 40 mile an hour limit has been secured previously through the criteria being met for a borderline case, and considering the number of reported injury accidents along this route, one of which has been fatal and too serious, it is recommended in this report that the committee makes a recommendation to the Executive Councillor for Highways, Transport and IT, that the objection is overruled so that the speed limit may be introduced. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm just looking towards councillor Dyer, do you have any comments on this one for us?
Yes, please, Chairman, and I'd just like to thank Sally, who's up in the public gallery. She kindly organised a petition. It was a couple of years ago now, when there was an accident on Meadow Lane, and the petition received over 700 signatures from residents calling for a reduction in the speed limit on Meadow Lane, so it's a, this is something that the residents of North Hycam and indeed Waddington are keen to see implemented. As has already been described, Meadow Lane, it's a key route in between Waddington and North Hycam, it's narrow, it's not lit, and on the Hycam side, there's many residential, there's a residential area, and many of the people who live there have got young families, and those children often walk along the road there. So, it's absolutely essential that we do all we can to make this road as safe as possible. As has been mentioned within the report, there's been a number of accidents over the years on Meadow Lane, I think we all expect to see a couple a year, to be honest with you. And in my time as the county councillor there, there has been some fatalities as well, there's been the one fatality. So, as was in the report, the mean speed is around 45 miles per hour, so what we're asking for today really isn't a reduction of 20 mile per hour from 60 to 40, it's actually reducing the speed limit to 40, and that's only really a five mile per hour impact on motorists who drive and use Meadow Lane. As I've said to many people I've spoken to about this road, this is one of the key roads that are going to benefit from the North Hycam Relief Road, that will see significant reduction in congestion, so as long as the government re-approve the funding to that, long-term the future of this road looks a lot more positive as well. But I just ask committee, therefore, this morning, that you look at the report in front of you, consider that the significant weight of the public petition, and approve the decrease of the speed limit down to 40 mile per hour to improve the safety in that area. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So, I'll therefore look towards committee. Councillor, Mrs Overton, please.
Thanks very much. I'm very happy to support this. I think the, I agree with you, and I think the point that's often missed, it's often safety we do know about, but it's also the quality of life of people living there, so I think this is a really important move, and thank you for that, for bringing it forward. So, happy to propose, second, propose, I think we're on. Thanks.
Councillor Cartwright?
Or indeed councillor Carrington. Yes, very happy to second this measure, Chairman. I'm very familiar with this road, I use it quite a lot, and it's really quite strange because an area where there have been a number of accidents is actually the straight stretch, and many of us will remember a bus which went off at that point, but there are two really quite severe corners on it, both are very evident when you drive up to them, but they repeatedly cause problems, and as we've heard from councillor Dyer, there has been a fatality there. The interests of all road users, including pedestrians and cyclists, because it is not a wide road, have to be paramount, so I'm very happy to second this one, and I hope colleagues will agree that the speed limit should be imposed.
Quick apology to councillor Carrington, you were hiding behind my vice chairman, and I must go and see, get some new glasses. Some of the characters in your name are very similar. Anybody else wishing to speak to this application? Seeing none, and I don't think there's any need for Jan to come back, so proposed by councillor Mrs Overton, seconded by councillor Carrington, that the recommendation on page 17 is adopted. All in favour, please show. That is unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, 4.3, A52 Bicker Road, Donnington. So, over to you, Jan, again, please.
Thank you. So, the A52 passes through Donnington, and at the request of the local member, it has been assessed for a speed limit reduction, where currently it is the national speed limit. The criteria have been met, and the mean speed of traffic indicates that a borderline case for a 40 mile an hour speed limit may be considered. However, the view of the police as enforcement authority is that a 50 mile an hour limit would be more realistic here, given the function of the A52 as a strategic route, and because of the lack of frontage development here, which does influence the speed of traffic. The recommendation in this report, therefore, is that the committee considers the view of the police, and makes a recommendation to the Executive Councillor for Highways, Transport and IT, that an order for a 50 mile an hour speed limit is progressed at this location. Thank you.
So, registered to speak via Teams, I have councillor Jane King. Andrew, please.
Yes, due to the technical issues this morning, it will be fair, I will have her on the phone and put her to the committee, if that's okay. I do apologise for the technical. Councillor King, sorry, we're just live in the planning meeting now, I'll put you to the microphone.
Okay, thank you.
So, whenever you're ready, councillor King.
You can go.
Hi, morning, everyone. This is a bit odd, but hey. Thank you for considering this, let me know when you want me to start speaking.
You can start speaking now.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's regarding the A52, very fast road through Donnington. There have been several accidents along there, a lot of them don't get reported because they often are fender benders without police involvement. Parish councillor, myself, are trying to get the, excuse me, the speed limit reduced to 40, but I gather that the police had some objections to bringing it back low, and have suggested 50. Have gone back to the parish council, and they would prefer 40, but if the most we can do is 50, then, okay, fine. I would like to see other measures put in place, but that is a conversation for another time. I would just like the committee's thoughts on this, and what you think we should do. Thank you.
Thank you for your contribution, councillor Jane King. Okay. Do you wish to speak at all, Jan? No? Okay, so over to committee, and I'll take you over to councillor Mrs Overton, please.
Thanks, just a question, really. Would it qualify for 40? And then we've said because it's an A52, and therefore we want fast traffic to go through, we're going for 50? I'm not quite sure why 50 is what's recommended, because if 40 is according to the calculations according to our policy, then probably it's the right thing to have, and we should go for 40. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Overton. So, the mean speeds indicate that it doesn't meet the criteria for a 40, but it sits within that threshold where we can, this committee can consider it as a borderline case, and therefore recommend a 40 if that's what they wish to do. But it also meets the policy for a 50 mile an hour limit, so we've included the police's comments, and that may be taken into account also. Thank you.
So, I'll therefore look towards the rest of the committee. You're coming back again, Mrs Overton?
Thanks, thank you for that clarification, which I appreciate, and I can see the thought that you've put into it, but I do feel that if it can be 40, and that is clearly what local people think is important, and we've just been taking the local view on the previous one, I would think we should look really carefully at that, and I would like to suggest or propose that we do do that. Thank you.
Are you okay with that, Jan?
Yes, so as a committee to recommend that this is the borderline case status of this particular scheme is taken forward, and therefore we will propose and consult on a 40 mile an hour limit rather than a 50.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. Question first for Jennifer May. What is the, on the picture on there, you have the six, the national speed limit and then the section, how many metres is that, do you know? Because I can't tell, obviously, from that image very easily.
About 50 on the plan.
Thank you. Chairman, looking at that stretch of road, and I take the fact that it is a borderline case, this is a main arterial route, and it's 50 metres from one speed limit to another. A, you could never enforce that, and the police would say, because if you're standing there with a radar gun, you need 250 metres plus, because this is an issue I've got in my own patch in Mowtown, where the speed limit changes, if you're stood there with a radar gun, the police do not have the width to enforce it. The only way you could enforce that is if there is a police car behind you, and they then check and go, oh, Mr so-and-so or Mrs so-and-so is speeding. I also think, Chairman, that because there is a lack of frontage there, and it is a straight piece of road, there is not a bend in that road, not that I can see off of that map. It is very rare I object to these, Chairman, but on this instance I do, I think it's overkill, I think it's excessive. It's a main arterial route, and it should stay 60 miles an hour, in my opinion.
So, Jan, please.
Sorry, councillor Smith, you misunderstood me there. The length of that proposed 50 mile an hour limit is approximately 300 metres, sorry.
Thank you for that clarification, I misunderstood. It, I, my, not, I shall retract my comments around enforcement and speed guns, but my comments around the fact that, in my view, it should stay as a 60 limit, Chairman, I still believe that's the case, because it's a straight piece of road, it's a main arterial route, there are not excessive amounts of junctions in situ, so personally, I think it should stay 60, because if we don't, people will see reductions in speed limits, and if the public aren't going to go along with you and back you, you can have them unless someone's sat watching. It doesn't mean anything, Chairman, you could have a 46 and say tomorrow, or I'll give you an example on Butts My Division, for a market raise and indicate that that is 50. If you are local, nobody does 50, because it used to be a 60 mile an hour limit, and it's not enforced, and what you actually get is greater risk, because people become frustrated, they then try and overtake in an area that isn't safe, because they are local and know the road, they are doing something illegal, I grant you, but you're actually causing a greater risk by reducing the speed limit, because people become frustrated, and that in some instances is a higher risk than actually a national speed limit, and in this instance, Chairman, I think it should stay 60 miles an hour.
Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to respectfully disagree with both of the previous speakers, and say that I do believe that the 50 mile speed limit would be the way forward. I note that the police have been informally consulted on it, and they are sort of of the feeling that 50 mile speed limit would work. I think that's a suitable compromise between the concerns that have been raised by the residents who want it to become 40, and those who sort of perhaps perceive that it should still be 60. I think sort of obviously we've got the injury accidents that have been reported, and that 50 miles per hour speed limit will assist with sort of lowering the overall speed, and I also note the comments that the police have made about the lower limit may lead to driver frustration and more overtaking manoeuvres, which I think would be heightened if the limit was reduced to 40. Thank you.
So, that's a proposal, I'm actually going to second it on the basis that it's from within the evidence, within the report, it's obviously been thought through by the officer, so I will second that. The other two recommendations or suggestions have not been seconded in any format. Are there any speakers or anybody else wishing to go forwards? Okay. Councillor Hall?
Sorry, yeah, I would just like to agree with what councillor Smith has said and second that. Thank you.
Going to be controversial today, aren't we? It's not like traffic items normally. Right, so councillor Smith, so your proposal to the meeting was?
My proposal, Chairman, was that it stays as a national speed limit.
Thank you. All in favour of it staying at the national speed limit, please show. Those against, please show. That is lost. Vice Chairman, your proposal was?
My proposal is to sort of take the officer's recommendation and go for the 50 mile per hour speed limit.
Okay, all in favour of 50 mile an hour speed limit, please show. One, two, three. Those against, please show. That is clearly carried, so that's what we will do, and the report is printed, stands up and holds. 4.4, Ashton Hall Drive, Boston, proposed waiting restrictions. Jan, please.
Thank you, Chairman. So, this considers proposed waiting restrictions at Boston Hall Drive, next slide, oh, thank you. Business premises and private residences lie adjacent to each other on Ashton Hall Drive, and non-street parking generated by the commercial area extends into the residential area, resulting in obstruction to traffic flow and obstruction to people's driveways. The scheme shown in Appendix A aims to mitigate these issues by introducing a daytime restriction, quite extensive restriction, which will apply Monday to Friday. The objections received focus on the impact on these restrictions on residents who may be inconvenienced by this limited access, particularly those with limited access to off-street parking facilities. Concerns are also raised about displacement into, further into the residential area, and also onto nearby Gilbert Drive, where it is alleged that parking already causes problems. The officer's view is that as parking will be unrestricted during the evenings and at weekends, disruption to residents will be reduced, and the extent of the restrictions proposed aim to discourage parking from being displaced further into the residential area, and encourage it to disperse into neighbouring commercial areas, where it can be more safely accommodated, and where observations have confirmed that there is capacity. Recommendation in this report, therefore, is that the committee considers these points, and subsequently makes a recommendation to the Executive Councillor for Highways, Transport and IT, that the objections are overruled so that this scheme may be introduced as advertised. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll therefore open to committee on the back row. Councillor Ashley Morris, please.
Many thanks, Mr Chairman. I've done a lot of work on this, simply because it's a problem that's gone on and on and on. The residential area is actually entire, entirely residential. On the main road, there is a large car dealership, and having looked back into their planning permission, which is some while ago, they assured the committee at that time, and I mean, this is a while ago, that there was adequate parking for their staff. It would appear that now they fill up the entire site, I mean, this is my own personal view, I have no figures on this, but it's fairly obvious when you look, that the entire site is now filled up with either customers' cars or cars for sale, and the impact is that most of their sort of workshop staff park right down Ashton Hall Drive, which is a beautifully designed and laid-out estate, it's an absolute, it really is. Most people have off-road parking, I've done a survey down there to find out whether this would, you know, whether these restrictions work for everyone. There were one or two that felt that they had, and one particularly, had three cars, and they wouldn't only, they only had parking for two. Well, the timings that we worked out with the excellent, excellent Highways Officer that came, and we drove round, we looked at everything, we spoke to people, was that really as you drive into this estate, and it's, I say, it is beautifully set out, there are cars parked both sides. I drive a tiny little car that was donated to the museum, so it literally is micro car size, and I genuinely, genuinely had no vision coming out of someone's drive, either way, because these cars are parked, there are probably 20 cars, probably more than that even, during the day, and having spoken also to the car dealership, they're not prepared to compromise, and there are, Gilbert Drive, which is the one mentioned, is entirely commercial, there's no residential down there, and there seems to be more than adequate parking, and a very short walk for the people that are working at the car dealership. So, I'd really asked the committee to, it's a small thing, it's been carefully tailored so that it doesn't interfere with even people bringing children home from school, because it would only be till probably 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock. It's all evening, it's not ridiculously early, and it wouldn't be at weekends, so the inconvenience is really, only it just simply means the car dealership needs to think about it and provide some parking for their staff. If anyone's got any further questions, I've probably got the answers, because I say, this has gone on for a long, long, long time. So, I'd ask the committee to recommend that we go ahead with this. Thank you very much.
So, some moving of the recommendation, who comes to talk, Jan? Okay. So, anybody else on the committee? I will therefore second the proposal on the basis of the local members' comments and the report. Anybody else wishing to speak? Give you fair time, councillor Skinner?
Thank you, Chairman. I can say the parking down there is abysmal. It is a very, very well-designed estate, and quite frankly, the people who are responsible for the problem should actually work with neighbours rather than causing a problem. So, I'm very much in support, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the report proposed and seconded, all in favour, please show. Thank you. Anybody against? Okay, so that was unanimous on that one, so thank you very much. So, I'll therefore move on to various roads in Scampton, in Stamford, 4.5. I must get some new glasses, they're not doing very well this morning. Jan?
Thank you. So, this report considers proposals to amend permits for parking bays. Provision for permit holders is provided within dual-purpose limited waiting bays throughout the town, and the local members of Stamford have asked that this provision is extended where possible. Next slide, please. Appendix A shows a number of streets which have been identified for additional bays, and consultation on these has taken place. Objections have received to some of the locations as described in the report, and these are shown on the next slide. Thank you. So, box one shows Adelaide Street, where an objection has been received to the proposed double-yellow lines. These lines are there, are proposed to protect private accesses, where currently there is a dual limited waiting permit bay, so this presents an ambiguity in terms of enforcement, so the proposals are there to protect the accesses. So the proposals are there to protect the accesses, but the objection is based on the fact this will reduce the availability for permit parking in Adelaide Street. Box two shows Brownlow Street where an objection has been received to the loss of unrestricted on-street parking, which is currently available to those with additional parking requirements. This concern is noted, but should the bays be introduced, parking here will still be available in the evenings and overnight. Box C shows the proposals at Barnet Road. This has prompted an objection from the residents of Stuteley Court who wish that the zone is extended so that they may have access to permit parking. However, they have their own dedicated private parking facilities and should they be given the access to the permit parking scheme, they would displace others who have no such provision. Finally, box D shows proposals at Burley Lane and Park Lane where objections have been received to the bays on the basis that discussions are ongoing with the school so that parking will hopefully be resolved in this area shortly. Provision of the double-yellow lines at the junction with High Street St Martin are still proposed. So the aim of these proposals is to increase capacity for permit holders to access on-street parking and therefore the recommendation is that the committee makes a recommendation to the executive councillor for highways, transport and IT that the objections are overruled and that the proposals at Burley Lane are limited to the restrictions proposed at the junction with High Street St Martin only. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Open to committee. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. I know this area well, visiting Stamford very, very frequently. I have sort of two points to make, which I'd just like to clarify. I can't really understand why the residents on Barnet Road would want permits when they already have their own parking allocated anyway. So that's my first point. So I don't really see why that would be an objection that's come forward. And the second point is regarding the area around the school with Burley Road, which obviously we're not going to do at the moment. I note that there's ongoing liaison taking place within the school and residents and I'm really delighted to see people working together and I think it's so important and hopefully a solution will be found that can work for everybody there. But again, sort of my next question on that is that why are the school not entitled to any permits at all when the residential properties are there? And obviously I would imagine that the school do have a number of residential staff as well. Thank you.
I think a school may be entitled similar to a business, but it would only be two permits maximum. I'm not sure about the detail of the Stamford scheme, but that's how it works in Lincoln. So only two permits. So it wouldn't solve the issue of the students' parking, which I think is what the problem is and what residents are in discussion about.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
So you don't feel inclined to move the report or anything?
I am happy to move the report, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Reed.
Thank you very much. Well, listening to councillor Vernon's explanations to do with Stamford, when we talk about discipline and students and their violation of parking by goodwill, I fully concur with that because it happens right across the county and in particular near the Graham School in Bourne, so I'm very happy to second and support what's put before us. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Giving it fair time. Okay, so the recommendations on page 31, proposed by Vice Chairman, seconded by councillor Reed. All in favour, please show. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. I will say anybody against any abstentions, seeing none. That's clearly carried. 4.6, Fen Road, Wishingborough. Jan, please.
Thank you, Chairman. So this considers a proposed 40 mile an hour speed limit on Fen Road. Next slide, please. A request was received for the new speed limit to include the two bends on Fen Road as shown in Appendix A. An assessment against policy confirms that the criteria have been met for a raw limit here and for a 40 mile an hour limit to be introduced. One objection has been received requesting that the length of limit is too short and needs to be extended further. As stated in the report, this cannot be supported as the criteria would not be met for the limit to be extended beyond the proposed lengths. Recommendation therefore is that the committee makes a recommendation to the executive member for highways, transport and IT that the objections are overruled so that this speed limit may be introduced. Thank you.
Taking my glasses off, councillor Carrington.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yeah, this one actually lies in councillor Corey's division, but it lies entirely within my district council ward, so I'm very familiar with it. As Jan has said, there are two bends within the stretch that is covered. I would draw colleagues' attention not only to the bend leading to Hengton down Fen Road, but particularly the rather, what looks on our map as a rather smaller road called Five Mile Lane. There is in fact an industrial estate down there. We have heavy goods vehicles serving some of the engineering facilities down there. We also have the headquarters of Marks Specialist Transport. So actually, there is a great deal of traffic going to and fro from that estate, coming out on a 90-degree bend. It is a very obvious 90-degree bend, but I know from references made to me from nearby householders, people do seem to have a great deal of trouble spotting it in advance and there are serious worries about people taking the corner too fast, coming off, damage accruing. So just going back finally, Chairman, to the objectors' point about extending it, I do think there's always a balance in these things and it goes beyond simply what meets the criteria to which Jan has referred. We should be imposing speed limits where they are demonstrably necessary, but not where they are not demonstrably necessary. And I think the balance in this case is right, so I'm very happy to move the officer recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Carrington. I'm quite happy to second this and I also do not represent this area, but I represent an adjoining area and that's the other side of the river. It's, you might think it's a very, very tenuous link, but in reality, Five Mile Lane is a very active cycle route and it's very much an area where an awful lot of people connect to the Lincoln to Boston cycle routes and it connects up through into West Lindsay and beyond. So if we can protect those cyclists a little bit with a speed limit, certainly on those corners, I do use that road frequently on my tracks through to Bardney and beyond, so I wholeheartedly support the recommendation. Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none. All in favour, please show now. Thank you. Unanimous. Anybody against any abstentions? Clearly not. Carried. Thank you. So 4.7 is Mill Road, Market Raisin. Jan, please.
Thank you. So on-street parking at this school site is causing concern, in particular on the bend outside and opposite the school entrance and opposite junctions and accesses on Mill Road. Thank you. Appendix A shows the proposed parking restrictions which aim to improve safety and traffic flow throughout this area. Five objections have been received. Residents concerned about any restrictions or loss of on-street parking close to their properties and they're also concerned about displacement into nearby streets affecting residents further afield and also the possible increase in traffic speed should the restrictions go ahead. Obstruction to traffic flows and overtaking manoeuvres which result from parking here have been observed and the proposals seek to manage parking at school start and finish times, leaving sufficient space for residents to park at other times. Recommendation in the report therefore is that the committee considers the aims of the scheme and makes a recommendation to the executive councillor for highways, transport and IT that the objections are overruled and so that the scheme may be advertised, introduced as advertised. Thank you.
Open to committee. Obviously, this is a West Lindsay type area. A little while ago, we did have the late Lewis Strange who was on the council and I did do a little bit of support work for councillor Strange in various locations around Market Raisin, Middle Raisin and beyond. I see what the report is trying to achieve and I do support it, so I will propose the recommendation. Do I have a second or anywhere? Thank you, councillor Reed. Does anybody wish to speak to the report? Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. Excuse me. I know this area very well as I use the surgery, so I know it exceedingly well. Excuse me. I certainly understand the intent of the report in terms of the double-yellow lines further away from the surgery. The, and I can only speak from anecdotal knowledge, Chairman, I suspect the reason that many people park on the opposite side nearest the surgery is that unfortunately, and I remember requesting this some years ago, when the car parks from West Lindsay were put onto a charging footing, there are two essentially poles in the middle of the entrance to the car park. And my car is not big, Chairman, but it's tight. And unfortunately, West Lindsay at that time were unwilling to remove those poles and I suspect that is why the other side of the road is often used by those who are not disabled because their attitude, and I can understand it and have sympathy, is it's a bit tight to fit my car in and then they don't want to pay if they have to pay. But I don't believe in raisin. They do for less than two hours, from my recollection. But I am quite happy to support the report, Chairman, because I recall tragically, somebody was actually knocked down at that location a number of years ago when I was the district councillor for the area. So this has been a long time coming, I think, and we, I think when I, and I was on the town council at that time as well. I think the hope was that it wouldn't be needed, but unfortunately, I think it very much is. Those who are obviously disabled will still be able to for a period of time, provided they do it sensibly, park where those double-yellow lines are. So that, for those that need to be that close, access is not going to be an issue, but what it will do is prevent what happens currently where you can have them all the way back to the junction, the one end towards the co-op, and you can also have them up the road, past the library, towards the school. And that's the road, that's the section that's really the problem because the residents suffer come school time when the locals who live there actually can't move. So fully support the report, Chairman.
Thank you. So it's been proposed and seconded already. I have no further speakers. All in favour, please show. That is unanimous. Anybody against any abstentions? Clearly, as printed, carried. Wisby Road, Eagle Road, Dodington Road, Thorpe Road are in the vicinity of Dodington and Wisby. Jan, please.
Thank you, Chairman. So following several collisions in the vicinity of this staggered junction shown at Appendix A, the Lincolnshire Road Safety Partnership have requested that the existing 50 mile an hour limit in place throughout this area is assessed for a possible reduction to 40 miles per hour. Mean speeds indicate that this may proceed, provided that approval for this reduction is given specifically to Eagle Road and Wisby Road approaches where the criteria are met for a borderline case. Recommendation in this report therefore is that the committee makes a recommendation to the executive member for highways, transport and IT that they support a consultation process for a 40 mile an hour limit on all approaches to this junction as permitted in the speed limit policy. Thank you.
Committee. Councillor Mrs Overton, please.
I'm very happy to support this. I do know this junction reasonably and it is, it feels dicey, you could say. So I'm very happy to support the recommendation for 40. I think it's the right solution for that particular place. Thank you.
Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a stretch in my division is very similar to this in terms of the number of junctions and the layout. That currently isn't meeting policy, unfortunately, and I know the frustration that causes and the risk that causes. So as councillor Overton said, absolutely 100% happy to support this. If it's not been formally proposed, Chairman, very happy. If councillor Overton has it, very happy to second it, Chairman.
I take, I did propose. I'll take that as proposed.
Indeed, I did take it as a proposal. So seeing no further speakers, proposed by councillor Mrs Overton, seconded by councillor Smith, as printed, all in favour, please show. Unanimous. Any abstentions? Anybody against? Clearly not. Carried. 4.9, Churchill Avenue, Skegness. Jan, please.
Thank you, councillor Fleetwood. An assessment indicates at this location on Appendix A, thank you, a school crossing patrol has been met for the criteria at the location shown here. So the aims of the proposed waiting restrictions at this location are to improve traffic flow, establish clear visibility of the patrol and oncoming vehicles, to regulate existing double yellows, double-yellow lines which are not supported by a traffic regulation order and to protect vehicular access into and out of the emergency service stations. The medical practice on the east side of Churchill Avenue has objected as it has concerns that additional restrictions on the public highway will increase the use of their car park by parents to the detriment of their patients trying to park to access the centre. Observations on-site confirm the potential hazards resulting from on-street parking on Churchill Avenue and the need for the restrictions as proposed to manage it. Some unrestricted areas will remain, which will mitigate any potential displacement of parking in the surrounding area. Recommendation in this report therefore is that the committee considers the benefits of this scheme and makes a recommendation to the executive councillor for highways, transport and IT that the objection is overruled so that the scheme may be introduced as advertised. Thank you.
Thank you. So open to committee councillor Sue Knutman.
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to support this recommendation. It's a very, very busy area. The only one question I would have is the advisory on the opposite side of the road in front of the fire station and the ambulance, is it, has it not been looked at to make that permanent? Because I'm just thinking, well, not permanent, but where the schools are because you're going to get parents parking on the opposite side of the road and the road is only like two-car widths. So I would have liked to have seen, rather than advisory, no waiting on that side too.
Thank you, councillor Knutman. No, at this time, we have not proposed a mandatory keep-clear markings on that side, but we will monitor following, should the scheme be introduced, we'll monitor and should it be required, we will revisit and make mandatory markings there.
So councillor Knutman has proposed. Councillor Skinner, please.
Happy to second this, but as brought up earlier by another member, these new restrictions do require visits by our enforcement teams to make sure they're working as advised. It's really, really important, that is. Happy to second check.
Okay, no further speakers. Proposed by councillor Knutman, seconded by councillor Skinner, all in favour, please show. Unanimous. Thank you very much. I will say, anybody against any abstentions, of course? Seeing none. 4.10 is waiting restrictions in North Icam, Richmond Drive, Heather Gardens, Ince Close and St George's Close. Jan, please.
Thank you. So the, my final report today considers another school site where the proposals detailed in Appendix A aim to improve safety and visibility at junctions and to facilitate traffic flow along Richmond Drive. We've received one objection. The objection has concerns that parking will be displaced further into the estate, causing obstruction elsewhere and that the restrictions as proposed on Richmond Drive will not improve traffic flow. It is the officer's view that the proposed restrictions, along with the site conditions on Richmond Drive, will improve traffic flow and that the scheme as a whole will promote highway safety. The recommendation therefore in this report is that the committee considers the potential for this scheme to manage parking effectively and that it makes a recommendation to the executive member for highways, transport and IT that the objection is overruled so that the scheme may be introduced as advertised. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll go back to committee then. Open to committee. Would anybody like to comment upon the North Icam applications? Councillor Carrington, please.
Just an observation, Chairman. We've got a number of these applications near schools on our agenda this morning and it's a fairly common feature that objectors have raised, local residents have raised, that it will simply displace parking somewhere else. In my experience, that is very often true, but the choice we face here... In my experience that is very often true, but the choice we face here is in the immediate vicinity of the school. Do we have traffic flowing as it should and do we have safety as it should? No solution is perfect, there's a balance in all of these things. I think in this instance and the other instances we've had this morning, the recommendation is the right balance. But I do appreciate what those objectors are saying, but the alternative is simply to leave an unsatisfactory situation on the ground in which small children have to navigate. Thank you Chairman.
So therefore I will...
And I'm happy to propose the officer recommendation.
So I wasn't going to ask you that, I was going to propose it myself and say what wise words you've made. So on the basis that you've made such wise words, I will second it councillor Mrs Overton.
Thank you, I do appreciate what's just been said, but I am concerned that we perhaps it's in the planning process, at some stage we have to think about where these cars are going to go. Hopefully people will just not have a car and use a bus, I mean I guess that's what we're hoping. But this is a problem that isn't going away and I appreciate that the proposed no waiting is not all day, as was said earlier, it's only part of the day. But you know, people live there, they're going to have to have driveways or something. You know, we need to try and put pressure in a different direction in longer term. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, who knows what the Transport Minister might be proposing over the next five years. Depending upon which Transport Minister it is of course. Okay, proposed by councillor Carrington, seconded by myself, all in favour please show. Unanimous, thank you very much. Simply, I know it's coming to Christmas, Jan, thank you for all the work you do. You do an awful lot behind the scenes and I know that you take an awful lot of flak on behalf of the council, you've got one heck of an in-tray to get through, but just from the committee I'd just like to thank you and your team for all the excellent work you do. And with that, we'll now move over, surprise, we'll now move over to county matters, applications to 5.1. And this will take us to Highfield Quarry and Mr McBride, the floor is yours.
Thank you Chairman, good morning councillors, yeah, we've got two applications on the agenda this morning. First one, as you say, takes us to Highfield Quarry and planning permission is sought by Welton Aggregates to extend the quarry into agricultural land lying immediately to the north-west of the existing quarry at Highfield Quarry, Bluestein Heath Road which is maybe also known as the A1028, Welton Le Marsh. The key issues to be considered in this consideration of this application are as follows. The need and justification for the release of new mineral reserves. The landscape and visual impacts on the Lincolnshire Wolds national landscape. And the environmental and amenity impacts associated with the development including noise, dust, transport on highways, ecology and biodiversity, cultural heritage and the water environment. So I'll just take you through the slides before we go to the report. So the first plan just gives you an idea of the location of the application. And you can see there the area of the Lincolnshire Wolds national landscape identified as a boundary. So you can see that the actual site is within that designation. Next slide please. So this takes a little bit closer in, so the area outlined in blue is the existing quarry with the access on to the A1028. The application site is the area in red which as you see there is the north-west part to the north-west of the existing quarry. Next slide please. This just shows the progression that's proposed from moving from the existing quarry into this proposed area. And the direction you can see there is to move in a northwesterly direction. Next slide please. This plan which shows the proposed restoration back to grassland once the extraction is completed. Next slide please. So this is a few photos to finish off, this one is looking over the existing quarry area. And in the distance there with the bit that's in blue is the access on to the A1028. So you can see the existing quarry in that situation there. Next slide please. So this area here is not the application site, it's the area within the quarry which the last area of currently permitted that can be extracted. And the soil has recently been removed from this area, so obviously quarrying activities will commence in this area shortly. The application site goes beyond the bund with the A1028 in the background. So that gives you an idea of the direction the quarry is already working towards. And then the final slide, this shows looking back towards that area which has been the sub-sol has been removed and this is the main area of the application site. So you can see the direction of travel moving into the area which is currently occupied by an agricultural field. Then we've got one final slide, you'll see in the report there is some reference to the areas the markets served by the quarry and this plan just gives a sort of indication of the radius of the different areas and with some detail set out in the report to provide some justification as to why the extension is justified in the views of the applicant. So if I can take you to the report, as normal, sets out the background to the application, the application details, particularly on page 75 of the report, there's a good summary table there which sets out the amount of material that is proposed to be excavated and also the annual tonnage that's proposed and also some details of the size of the application. And then moving on as normal, this application is accompanied by an environmental statement. So the report sets out in detail summaries of the various chapters that are contained in the environmental statement. So obviously there's quite a lot of detail there in terms of all the environmental impacts associated with the development and then how they would be mitigated, which is part of the environmental impact assessment process. And moving on to the results of the consultation and publicity which starts on page 95. You can see there that the majority of those that have responded have got no objection. Starting off with the district council there, sitting out there, they've got no objection. Likewise Environment Agency, Natural England, and going through the other sort of technical bodies who have provided comments in relation to the application, but essentially there's no fundamental objection to the application. On page 98 which lists some of the consultees who haven't yet or haven't provided a response. I have received a response from the local member councillor Davy. I received this on Friday and this sets out that he states, "This quarry which sits in my county division has been a longstanding business and employer in the area. The management of the facility and its operation raises no concerns with my residents nearby or the local parishes. I believe the recommendation in your committee report to approve the application is the correct one. I therefore wholeheartedly support the recommendation and urge your approval of it." And then moving on to the next section which is the conclusion section. And again as normal, we've identified the main areas that need to be given consideration in the determination of this report and then some commentary against all of those different topics. I won't go through those in detail on the basis that committees reviewed the report and particularly the conclusion section. So that leads into the recommendation which is in two parts on page 110 and then go on to page 111. Firstly, that the report forms part of the council statement pursuant to the Town and Country Planning Environmental Impact Assessment Regulations which require the council to make available for public inspection at the district council specific information regarding the decision and the committee report provides that information which if approved will be sent to the district council to be put on the planning register. And secondly, that on page 111, that planning permission is granted subject to the biodiversity gain information and the planning conditions which follow on later in the report. So that is the officer presentation.
Thank you Mr McBride, now somewhere to the rear of me I believe I may have the agent to the applicant, Mr Oliver Craven, who we can afford three minutes to address the committee. No rush, don't worry, no pressure, but the pressure might come where the committee might be minded to ask you a question or two afterwards. Might, depends on how festive they're feeling. So whenever you're ready, the floor is yours, it's the big red button at the bottom. And I'm sure that somebody has a finger on the stopwatch which we can see is set at three minutes, so whenever you're ready sir.
Thank you very much and thank you councillors for the opportunity to speak this morning. Not a huge amount to say, fully support the issues as set out in the officers' report. I think it's probably just key to point out that the main driver for this application is to ensure that we continue the supply of aggregates to the east of the county, particularly along the east coast, in the most sustainable manner possible and without the need to bring limestone aggregates from quarries in the west of the county. Clearly there's obviously a pressing need to reduce transport mileage wherever possible and I'm sure you're all aware travelling east-west in the county isn't always the easiest. So if we can do anything to reduce HGV traffic on those routes then I think that's welcome. In addition to actually continuing the supply of primary aggregates, this will also help support the continuation of recycling of aggregates and the production of concrete at the existing quarry. And those items provide an important link in the local supply chain. The economics of the situation are also important, not just to the applicant and the employment that this will secure, but also to the wider construction industry not having to pay to bring those aggregates halfway across the county. And that's particularly important in supporting the continued growth and development throughout the east of the county as well. As you've heard, the application, it's within the Lincolnshire Wolds AOMB, the national landscape and therefore from the outset we've really tried to engage with neighbours, with the Wolds Countryside Service and with the planning officers to ensure that we've brought forward the best possible scheme that we could on this. It includes a range of technical assessments as we heard from Neil, which all conclude that the development is capable of being undertaken without any unacceptable impact. I'd like to think that where we are today shows that the success of the pre-application works we've done, we've got to this point, we've got no objections from any consultancy, any members of the public and as we've just heard, we've got support from the local member. Also quite proud that obviously we're a BNG application, so we're aiming the 10% biodiversity net gain. I'm quite proud that we've managed to get actually over 100% biodiversity net gain in this scheme. So that's a fairly significant factor in my view. As you've heard and as is set out in the committee report, the application is considered to accord with all relevant planning policy and the supply situation in the east of the county clearly represents exceptional circumstances to justify the release of further aggregates. As evidenced within the application and by the absence of any objections, the development is capable of being undertaken without giving rise to any unacceptable impacts on either amenity or environmental receptors and will deliver significant benefits to the county. I therefore respectfully ask you to follow the recommendation and approve permission this morning. And if there is anything, any questions anyone may have, I shall do my best to answer them.
Thank you very much sir, so although the clock behind you is still reading three minutes, luckily I had to my hand thank you Andrew, you are within three minutes, so that's excellent. Are there any questions of the agent from the committee? Councillor Mrs Overton please.
Thanks very much and it's remarkable to not have any objections, so you've done well with that. I'm just interested in the soil that you see taking out and it's all going to remain on-site, I think. I didn't see it being taken off to a three metre high band maximum. So presumably it's going to be very big because to get all of that out of the hole into a three metre band must be a very long, long stretch I guess, so I'm just wondering about that. And then that will presumably be planted with the wildflowers, so the increase in diversity could be temporary? Or is it going to have trees on it to make a woodland? Thank you.
Right, the soils on the application site are relatively thin, so there's not a huge volume of soils to start with. We've got a bund down the southwestern corner boundary and then up the northwestern corner. The northwestern bund will actually be quite deep, it's only three metres high but I think it's about 20 metres deep, as you say, to accommodate those soils. They will be planted up or seeded with a wildflower mix whilst the extension is in operation. But then we'll recover those soils and that area will go back to agricultural land. And the excess soils will be used to buttress the bottom of the quarry faces. Most of the biodiversity net gain comes not from those bunds themselves, but from the calcareous grassland that will ultimately be there in perpetuity. So whilst yes, there is some gain from the soils, it's the longer term restoration of the site that produces most of the actual gain for that.
Thanks, and that's in how many years' time, just remind me, sorry I know it's in here.
We are looking at five and a half years extraction with restoration to be complete within eight years. And I believe there's a condition to that effect proposed.
Thank you.
Councillor Carrington please.
Thank you very much Chairman, yes, just a quick technical question, I think it's for you, might be for officers. You mentioned biodiversity net gain, very impressive figure that you're recording there. In the draft conditions, draft condition 14 on page 117 of the agenda has a standard requirement for a habitat management and monitoring plan. My question is simply, this monitoring would normally last for a period of 30 years under the requirements of the Environment Act. Will you confirm that it would be the applicant who would pay the cost of that monitoring?
Yeah, absolutely, that plan that will be conditioned or required by that condition, obviously then we will have to include the aftercare details in that, obviously it used to be for five years, BNG coming in has put that out at 30 years, so that's then incumbent on the operator to fund all that and maintain that for 30 years.
Thank you, seeing nobody else wishing to question you if you'd like to retire. Mr McBride, anything you'd like to comment on at this stage?
Thank you Chairman, just sort of responding also to councillor Carrington's question. As the committee probably are aware that the mineral sites within the county are subject to monitoring which we can basically do chargeable visits to. And I think the intention is into the future is to basically pick up biodiversity net gain monitoring within that regime as well. So that's something we're working on into the future. So obviously that would be at the expense of the developer who has to pay fees for those monitoring visits to take place.
Thank you very much, so therefore we're going to open to committee. I think I'll probably start off and say that reading through the report, I think everyone's very positive with regard to this application. And I don't see anything negative with regard to this extension to go into place. So therefore I'm going to propose it, councillor Carrington.
Yes, happy to second it Chairman, these are ferociously complicated applications technically and I think we should all express gratitude for the thoroughness of the officer report and the clarity of that report. It's a huge amount of work by the applicant and also by our own team that goes into these. Very important for economic development, but it is equally important that we have the right balance to ensure that ecology is borne in mind and that the environment is restored afterwards. So I think we have an excellent application here and I'm very happy to second.
Would anybody else like to speak to the application? Would anybody else like to speak to the application? Therefore, proposed by myself, second by Councillor Carrington, all in favour, please show. That is unanimous, but I will always ask, anybody against any abstentions, see nothing, that is therefore carried as printed. Next application is five point two, which takes us to Ropsley Quarry. So back to Mr McBride, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, it does take us to Ropsley, and rather than dealing with chalk, this time we're dealing with limestone. So the planning permission is sought by Johnson Quarry Group for an extension to the existing quarry at Ropsley Quarry, Long Hollow at Ropsley. The proposed development would allow removal of approximately two million tonnes of limestone, which would extend the duration of the existing quarry for a further seven years. The key issues to be considered in this case are the need and justification for the extraction of the mineral reserve, and the principle of extracting limestone from the site, potential for impacts arising from the development on the highway, water environment, historic setting, landscape amenity impacts, including arising from fugitive emissions on surrounding land users and residential properties, the potential for impacts on ecology and the natural environment, and the delivery of an appropriate beneficial restoration scheme. So if I just go through the presentation, some slides to give some context, let's move on to the next one, please. So this is the application site. You can see there the area outlined in red, and then the land just below that is the existing quarry. The road that the access is basically linked to is the A52. Just in green on the plan there, you can see a public footpath, and I've just highlighted that in green because there's some reference in the report to that public footpath, so just to bring that to your attention. Next slide, please. So just a bit more detail, the area in blue, as I say, is the existing quarry, and the area in red is the proposed extension area. Next slide, please. Looking, using aerial photographs again, just to show where the existing quarry is, and as you can see that, and then the extension is to the north with the A52 providing the northern boundary of the site. Just in that northwest corner, there's a property, and again, that's referred to in the committee report, and the impact of the development on that property. Next slide, please. And this slide just shows us the different phases. So naturally, the first phase is immediately adjacent to the existing quarry, and then it moves in a northwards direction through phases two and three, and then on the eastern side concludes with phase four. Next slide, please. And finally, just some photographs, so this shows the existing access road from the quarry on to the A52. So you can see it's a well-tarmacled and well-prepared access road on to the A52. Next slide, please. This looks, this is looking on to the A52, and this is looking eastwards, so you can see it's a good, long stretch of road. Next slide, please. And then, again, looking westwards, again, you can see that there's good visibility coming out of the access on to the A52. And just adjacent to the A52 on the southern side, you can see the screening that basically provides the screening of the quarry from the, I suppose, the main public vantage point, which is on from the A52. Next slide, please. This is the location of the footpath on the opposite side of the A52, and again, there's a little bit of reference in the report to the footpath, so I've just put in a photograph to show that. Next slide, please. This is looking from the top of the access point over the proposed area for the extraction, the new area. Next slide. And again, a similar sort of view, but just on the corner there, you can see into the area which is used for parking and where the waybridge is associated with the existing quarry operations. Slide. And these final few slides are just showing a little bit more sort of in detail of the application site itself. So this is looking southwards from the northwest corner of the application site, and this is quite close to where that residential property is. Next slide, please. Again, another close view, this is on the west side of the quarry, of the application area, looking in eastwards direction towards the existing office and waybridge compound. We've got one final slide, and this is just showing the screening, which I made reference to earlier, from the A52. So you can see there's a good existing screen bund along that northern boundary. I think that's the last slide. One more. And this is, again, looking from the residential property chain farmhouse. So that concludes the presentation. The report, as normal, sets out the background in terms of the history of the quarry, and then goes through the application details in terms of setting out what's proposed. Whilst this application isn't classed as an environmental impact assessment type development, nevertheless, there has been considerable detail provided with the application in terms of technical reports to go through the sort of normal environmental topics that you would expect. So that's contained in the report, and I won't go through those in detail on the basis that since the committee has had the opportunity to review the report and the relevant sections. Moving on, as normal, there's the section that sets out the relevant development plan policies from both the National Planning Policy Framework, and also policies from the Lincolnshire Minerals and Waste Local Plan, and also the South Castritham Local Plan. Moving on to the consultation section on page one hundred and fifty-four, you'll see that we've received comments from the Ropsley Parish Council, who have noted that they've been approached by some local residents who are concerned about the extension to the quarry, they're worried about the noise level both from the actual working of the quarry, and especially any use of explosives. There's also the concern of the vehicles, and basically to emphasise that they should not use the minor roads in the vicinity of the application site. See, the South Castritham District Council have raised no objection to the application, but have asked that various matters are taken into consideration. I won't go through all the different consultation responses there, set out there in detail for you, so that you can see the comments that have been submitted. But I will just refer you to on page one hundred and fifty-nine, that there has been some comments raised by local residents, so we've had three comments from local residents who have raised some concerns regarding to the application. And moving on to the conclusions section as normal, we've identified the relevant topics that need to be taken into consideration, and provided some commentary for each of those topics, and then concluded whether we consider that the application is in accordance with the relevant development plan policies. And bringing all that together, the recommendation on the page, recommendation on page one hundred and seventy-three is that planning permission be granted, subject to the conditions that are set out in the report, the thirty-four conditions that are recommended to be attached to any planning permission granted.
Thank you, Mr McBride. Now, we have with us the local member, councillor Hill, who'd like to address the question.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I mean, I didn't comment on this, because when I first saw it, I thought it was pretty non-controversial and pretty straightforward. The site itself is, the access is very good, there is, you know, on to the A52. And I don't think, although there have been some complaints about mud on the road, certainly quite recently, actually, via highways, I've visited quite often, although inevitably there is some, a little bit of, should we say, dust more or less, and when it's wet, it is a bit white. But I think in terms of how they manage the site, it's pretty good. Previously, there were some issues around the blasting, which happens irregularly, but I think, again, I'm not aware that on the current site, where they do their blasting several times a week, I'm not aware of any issues, but although it's one of those things. I do have several comments, though, in terms of the report. First is the house on the northwest corner, which Neil referred to. Currently, it's actually derelict, it's got no roof on, but it is a development site. So it does look like the proposed quarry is coming quite close to that site, and I do wonder if the question is, is the bit, the zone round it, is it big enough? It does seem to be quite close, so I'd like a view on that. The parish council, I think, did mention about the footpath, and although you saw the picture of it, the issue is that when you go over the A52, you don't actually, the footpath is diverted currently, and you have to walk down the side of the A52, admittedly inside the field, and then walk all the way back, because previously, and I don't understand why, you used to be able to go straight down the bank, and for whatever reason, that's not possible now. I don't really know why that's not possible, but I think the reasonable request was that, well, as the applicant, why can't the applicant do something about getting a proper access to reinstate the footpath where it should be? And apparently, in the report, it says, well, that's not possible. I don't understand why it's not possible. Technically, it might not be possible, but surely some arrangement could have been made with the applicant. The other thing, the main concern I've got, when you actually read the report, there is no need for this quarry. When you actually read the report, what it says is, we have got years of supply left in Lincolnshire for stone, there are other quarries. What it actually says is, well, it's because Cambridgeshire needs stone. Well, I'm sorry, why are we sacrificing our future supply of stone so we can look after some other county? I don't really get it. I mean, this is short, I hope you've all read it, and it makes it quite clear, we have years of supply left, and there's some complicated justification, really, why this should go ahead, which, to be honest, I'm not convinced by. What it means, of course, in future years, we will then have to find more quarries somewhere else, because this allocation has been, in effect, been given to Cambridgeshire, which I don't think is correct at all. So I really do challenge the justification for this, because it's not there, because we have enough stone for years to come in Lincolnshire. And the final thing, I do think there is an issue of access and the minor roads, although it does go on to the A52. What we wouldn't want is for quarry lorries to go due south of the Ropsley, all through those minor roads. And I would request that there is a requirement that the main roads are used to, if it is granted permission, obviously, we now know it's all going to Cambridgeshire, so we'd need to make sure. But I would, my basic problem is that there is not a justification for this extension at this stage, although one day they will be. So those about three or four points there, please, Chairman.
So, Mr McBride.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for those questions. I suppose the first question in relation to the property on the northwest corner of the site, whilst it's currently in a derelict condition, we still work on the basis that it can be used residentially. So just because there's no one in there at the moment doesn't mean that we don't take the impact of the development on to that property into consideration. And from the results of the information that's been provided by the applicant in terms of noise, dust, and other environmental impacts, the analysis has demonstrated that, subject to the conditions that we've outlined, the residential amenity of that property could be maintained with the development in that location. So we've not had any reason from our own internal analysis of those reports, and also the comments that we've received from consultees, particularly South Castritham District Council.
Councillor Neil, how close will the quarry be to that property?
So it's basically, the actual red line boundary will be right up to the boundary of that property. But there will be some standoff arrangements so that the quarry in itself won't go right up to that boundary. So there will be a buffer zone of probably around about fifty or sixty metres from where the actual quarrying activities go to the actual property. So that will now enable...
Is that in the report?
It should be in the report. In terms of setting out the, I don't know whether it actually says the actual distance, but it does set up... So...
I'm sorry, councillor Hill, I'm getting some severe looks from legal, and I'm going to have to halt you a little bit. I'm going to have to halt you slightly, because Mr McBride's trying to respond, and I'm getting some looks from the lady from legal, who's now looking over from...
I can respond one at a time, or if I'm not allowed to speak anymore, and not represent my constituents, I'll take a dim view of that, and I shall speak to legal later. I mean, either we can have a proper conversation about this, or we can cut it down and just...
If you'd like to continue, councillor Hill. So...
Question, what is the buffer zone going to be?
Apologies, I don't have the exact distance to hand at the moment, but what I can say is that the assessment that has been done has looked at the safeguarding and the screening that can be put in between the area where the quarry or the mineral will be extracted from, and the distance from that property. And with those mitigations in terms of soil buns and the distance, the conclusions are that the impact on that residential property would be within acceptable limits. So it wouldn't be to a level where they would be expecting to cause complaints through noise and dust and associated issues. So that's what the, I suppose, that's the process that the technical details, look at where the quarrying will take place in terms of how close it will be, and if the mitigations that's put in place in terms of the soil bund and other safeguards, then that won't unduly affect the amenity that those occupants could reasonably expect to enjoy. So moving on to the second consideration in terms of the issue around the footpath. So as the set out in the report, the actual footpath itself doesn't affect the application site in any way, and the tests for requiring a contribution from the applicant to basically, to provide some sort of scheme through a sort of section 106 agreement, has to basically show that impact from the application site on to the particular sensitivity that's been identified. So in this case, the public footpath. So it falls outside of the application area, and there isn't anything to suggest that any part of this development would impact on the users of the footpath. The gradient is outside of the, where the location of the footpath is, it's outside of the land that's owned by the applicant, so they wouldn't be able to undertake any sort of mitigation works on that area. And therefore, there's no reason why the development couldn't proceed without causing any detrimental impact on the public footpath. So in planning terms, there's no justification for the applicant to have to basically undertake any works to sort of address those issues with the footpath. undertake any works to sort of address those issues with the footpath, whatever the historical reasons for why that gradient exists, but it's not due to the applicant, and therefore it doesn't fall to the applicant's responsibility to deal with it.
So just to pause you slightly, does that satisfy your point there, councillor Hill?
I entirely agree with Neil as to the legal situation, but my point is, is it possible as a gesture, a matter of goodwill gesture, that even though, and I think Neil is correct, there is, it's nothing, you know, the applicant could quite reasonably argue it's, that problem was not our cause by, it was caused by somebody else, but what I'm trying to explore is, as a matter, what it would be the process as a matter of goodwill, shall we say, for the applicant to sort this problem out, because in terms of the profit made from the quarrying as to sorting out a relatively small matter shouldn't be a big deal. So I've just asked the question. I, I think Neil is dead right, you can't, but surely there is a, I'm just asking a general question about goodwill and whether a common sense way could be found forward.
I think you'll find there's not a lot of goodwill in planning on lots of occasions, but, Mr McBride.
Yeah, I think, Chairman, I thought the only thing that we could, we can do is to make the applicant aware of this issue, I'm sure that they already are, and, and say that the, if permission is granted today, that the committee expressed a request that the, the applicant gives some consideration to addressing this and providing, as a goodwill gesture, given the impact of the quarry in the locality, that they might look at trying to come together with our public footpaths section to develop some sort of strategy that can address that. But from a technical point of view, because it's not caught by the application site, we couldn't require a section 106 requirement or obligation for the applicant to do that.
Chairman, if it isn't written down when you have a planning permission granted, the applicant will quite happily forget about it in future, and I'm not talking about specifically this applicant, any applicant. If it isn't in writing, it's very difficult to enforce later on. So if you'd like to continue, Mr McBride?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. So in, in terms of the, the further point in relation to the need for the minerals, so page one hundred and sixty of the report, paragraph one hundred sets out the commentary there as to the, the justification, as to, and this does go into existing land banks as to how much material that is currently permitted within the, within the county, particularly for limestone, and as you'll see in the report there, that there is some sort of question mark as to whether that ten-year land bank in its current level will continue to the ten-year period, which it's provided to do. Obviously, we're at a stage now in bringing forward a review of our Lincolnshire Minerals and Waste Local Plan, which will again revisit the, the land bank, but obviously we're a couple of years away from potentially adopting that document. So on, on the basis of current extraction rates within the county, also taking into account the consents that already have been granted, but perhaps activity hasn't yet started, we've come to the conclusion that in that ten-year period, we are going to be slightly below what we're required to have for, for a ten-year period. So on that basis, we have come to the conclusion that there is a justification for the development. I take the point about the material being taken to Cambridgeshire, the applicant has obviously identified this as their primary source, but I suppose there's also a recognition that in minerals planning, that not every area will have the necessary mineral in their locations for them to be self-sufficient. So there is some cross-boundary transfer of mineral activity and, or mineral products, and that's what, to some extent, the local plan tries to make sure to, to allow for that movement of minerals from areas which have perhaps got quite large reserves to other areas which haven't. And I always can quite understand the concern that there's a perception that Lincolnshire's minerals is then providing for the, I suppose, the need of other counties, and that obviously sometimes doesn't always go down very well with, you know, local residents, but I suppose the, the national planning system that's put in place does take into account the need for areas that have got a particular sort of reserve of a mineral to provide minerals to those areas that haven't. So there is that cross-boundary expectation, and that's the reason why we've come down to the view that there is a need, and that need is met by this application.
Councillor Hill?
All I'd say, the, there is, there is no need in Lincolnshire, and I think the report bluntly sort of justifies it on the basis of, it's not clear-cut at all. I think there is a principle here, and it's quite a challenging one, because what's actually been said here, there's going to be, in years to come, somewhere in Lincolnshire is going to have the quarry, because we've allowed this stuff to go off to Cambridgeshire, that's the blunt truth of it. This particular quarry, I, I have to say, is pretty, is particularly well, is well-managed, there's not an issue, but I think a point of principle for this committee is that, are you happy to know in future that somewhere's going to have a quarry next to them, because we've allowed, you've allowed this stuff to go off to somewhere else? And I think it's, it is a point of principle, but I'll stop there.
Thank you, and I think the final point was around local roads, and to ensure that vehicles don't, if they're doing deliveries and whatever, that they don't use the minor network. I suppose, given that the, we've identified that the main sort of recipient of this mineral would be in Cambridgeshire, so the idea would be that from, from the A fifty-two, that as quickly as possible, the vehicles would get onto the A one, and then sort of go southwards. There is a, whilst we've got a condition largely which says that vehicles should turn out of the site, if we want to extend that to put in a more sort of formal mechanism to ensure that vehicles only use the routes that are sort of the part of the strategic road network, there is a mechanism for a section 106 to put in place a routing agreement, so that that is a, becomes legal obligation on the applicant to not use those minor roads only in very exceptional circumstances for perhaps when there's local deliveries, but that, that is a mechanism that is available. As officers, we haven't felt the need for that section 106 to be imposed, but that's not, that's an option for the committee, they feel that that safeguard needs to be put in place to safeguard those, the local, the more minor network, road network in this area.
Okay, so I think we've dealt with councillor Hill's issues and points now, so I'm therefore going to open it to committee, and I can see lots of hands going up, starting with councillor Reed, followed by councillor Carrington, then councillor Mrs Overton.
Well, the first one is to do with the 106 stipulations that we can impose. There's many hearts and minds, though I've been privileged to speak first, that will be thinking about the villages and the impact on villages, and whereby which our weight restriction limits within the county of Lincolnshire's fine criteria is particularly relaxed, stroke nonexistent for Lincolnshire. It would be great if we could make some stipulation that these lorries actually stick to A roads for their dispersal. That's my first point. The second point is, well, comes down to need, and whereby which I don't think we can really do anything about the movement of minerals and those sorts of provisions from Lincolnshire to other counties. I think there is the point as to, is it really within the mineral and waste quantity of the ten years at this moment in time? Because if it isn't, then there could be grounds to actually refuse it. If it is, and there is accommodation, I mean, it's always a story, isn't it? There's always going to be another plan implemented, we hear it all of the time, but this application is today, and we can't find too much about it that it is for our local people of Lincolnshire, but we can look at the bill of quantities, has we got ten years' supply of stone, or have we not? If we've got anything less than ten years, then we have a reason to question it if we, otherwise, we haven't, but I think we need to know that to make this judgment. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, I'll move on to councillor Carrington next, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm, I'm not going to make any apology for going back to the issue of need, and this is really a question for Mr McBride, I'm afraid. I'm looking in particular at paragraph one hundred and two, which colleagues will find at the bottom of page one hundred and sixty, and it starts with a very clear statement. Taking the applicant's statement into account, it says, "It is important to establish at the outset that it is not incumbent on Lincolnshire to directly plan toward meeting the needs of another planning authority." Now, at face value, that's a pretty clear statement. By the time we get to the end of paragraph one oh two, it seems to be saying something rather different, and I'm trying to tease out how we get there. It mentions in the course of the paragraph, the production of the local aggregate assessment, it talks about the managed aggregate supply system, which I'm taking as a, something that goes beyond the county and is more national, and it then concludes, "Through this mechanism, Lincolnshire accords with the requirement of the NPPF and PPG, National Planning Policy Framework and Planning Practice Guidelines, to provide for a steady and adequate supply of aggregates, both locally and regionally, and makes an important, an appropriate and sustainable contribution to the managed aggregate supply system," whatever that is. So I guess my question is, do we get there because of what is set out for us in paragraph one oh three, the following paragraph, talking about the need for a ten-year reserve of crushed rock? Going back to what councillor Reed has just asked, is there a serious doubt over this? If so, how does that equate with the fact that seventy percent of this product appears to be exported? So I couldn't quite work out how that could, could then go against reserves, if of course those reserves in Lincolnshire are meant to be used in Lincolnshire as opposed to somewhere else? And is this a sustainable reason for refusal, or is the complexity around this managed aggregate supply system that goes beyond our geography, something which actually takes us from a situation at the beginning of paragraph one oh two, where it appears to be saying quite clearly, there is, there is, there is no need within the county, to what we find at the end of it, where it seems to be saying that it accords with a managed aggregate supply system, but I don't know what weight that carries in planning terms?
Mr McBride, please.
Yeah, I mean, thank you for the question. I don't think that the sort of the mechanics and the calculations that go behind the, the need and distribution for the minerals is, is, it is quite complicated, and because it does involve looking at both sort of the, the need for a particular county, and also that regional need. And there are mechanisms, such as the local aggregates survey, which sort of feeds into, to that, which basically requires each county to set out as far as it can in terms of the information that comes from, from operators, the amount of mineral that's extracted from, from, from their county, and how much of that mineral remains within the county, and how much is transported outside. But that always ends up with some sort of commercial sensitivity as to how much mineral operators are prepared to, to provide. I guess the, the sort of the starting point of the paragraph one oh two, if, if a, you wouldn't expect a quarry in Lincolnshire to just provide for a facility or a need of a adjoining county on its own. I think they would, you know, to sort of say, well, there's a, there's a requirement in, in Cambridgeshire, and, and that would be the justification for a quarry in Lincolnshire. I don't think that would stack up. But clearly, you know, this, this quarry currently exists in Lincolnshire, it does provide some minerals to, to Lincolnshire, and also obviously outside the boundary of a county. And I think again, it would be quite difficult for the planning system to put on a, a stipulation that the mineral that was produced couldn't leave the county because of the enforceability of that, and the, I suppose, getting into the, whether that's a relevant consideration. And I know turning it around to, you know, from, from waste when that's imported from outside the county as well, and there's, there's also, there's always questions about it should only be for the local need, but clearly, when we're working with sort of things that go beyond the boundaries of borders, then that becomes a difficult restriction to, to, to put in place. So the, the analysis that has been done has identified, from, from your officers' point of view, that there is a deficiency in the land bank which this application would overcome, and therefore, the justification is on that need, that this extension is justified on that purpose, for that purpose. I accept that, you know, looking at the calculations and things like that, there's, it's not an exact science, but from, from our analysis as officers, we feel that there is sufficient justification for this, for this extension to, to, to be required.
Councillor, Mrs Overton, please.
Thanks, thanks very much. I'll try and go through a few points. Firstly, on that need, presumably, it depends on how the need was calculated. If it was calculated that we needed the X amount that was put in, including what was going to be needed in Cambridgeshire, then clearly that would make sense. But if it was calculated on what we were going to need in Lincolnshire, then presumably we need to make sure that what we do matches the calculations that were laid out in the first place to calculate the need. So I'm just, just a point on that. Secondly, about the distance from the house, this one is different to the previous application we had a while ago, where it was, quarrying was going to be allowed within twenty-five metres of the walls of a house. And the, when I queried that, the grounds given was that it wasn't blasting, it was gravel extraction rather than rock. So this one is rock, this one involves blasting, I think. So I don't think the distance should be the same. I think we have to think again about how close to a dwelling that the, that quarrying should be allowed, and bearing in mind this could take over quite a long period of time, so the dwelling could well be wanted in that period of time. On the, just the small issues then, was the, so I would like to suggest that we do set a figure for that. So if it's sixty metres or some figure, I think there should be a figure that we actually say, not quarrying within this distance of the house. I see you've put the sound there, the, the limitation on sound, and to fifty-five decibels LA equivalent, which is one hour free field, and I'm not sure if that means that you can still be suffering huge blast, one-off noises, as in blasting, and still come under that overall, in which case it doesn't feel like a very strong protection, it would still be quite unpleasant to live there. On the page one eight two, we've got the times, and you've put seven o'clock start, but then on the last paragraph of page one oh two, it said, that's okay, if it's agricultural time, then it can be six thirty. And I just think that's really difficult to enforce, you know, let's just have one time of seven, so everybody knows what it is. Then on the footpath, very happy with the suggestion that we put a request for change there, clearly not necessarily, not enforceable, but a request on the footpath, and very happy with the suggestion of a routing arrangement for the 106. Thank you.
Thank you for those questions. I think, just to make it clear, very clear, that the ten-year land bank is based on Lincolnshire's need, not Cambridgeshire's. need, not Cambridgeshire's. So the fact that this quarry chooses to take, or its market is in Cambridgeshire, it's, the land bank that we're using is based on Cambridge's, on Lincolnshire's export or extraction and what our permitted reserves are. So we don't, it's not based on Cambridgeshire's need in any way. For the sound request, obviously, the reports that have been prepared in terms of noise have identified that it can take place without causing harm to that amenity. If the view of a committee is that there should be a distance within a condition that says there should be no development within, say, 150 metres of that boundary, then I think that's something we can look at and take away as a potential additional condition to address. Obviously, I can't tell you what that figure would be now, but that's something that we can go away and look at. Again, in terms of blasting, I mean, that is obviously a noise that the noise assessment has taken into account. And again, on the basis that the environmental health officer at South Castrated District Council hasn't questioned or raised any concern about that, then our judgement is that it does take blasting into account, and those levels that are proposed are acceptable. Is there any other points that you'd identified?
Just the 6:37, I think.
Yeah, so what we're proposing here is to mirror those conditions that are on the existing quarries. So those conditions are ones that have operated for some time, and we therefore feel that there's no reason to differ from that. We haven't had any particular complaints about early morning activity, so we don't see there's a justification to change the conditions that have operated on the existing quarry for certainly four or five years at least.
Thank you. Just on the need, it does, if it is Lincolnshire's need, and it's now going somewhere else, then clearly there is a shortfall, it's true to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So Vice Chairman, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll apologise in advance because I've got three different pieces of paper where I've scribbled notes whilst we've been debating this. The first thing I'd like to say, though, is that I wholeheartedly support councillor Hill's request to ensure that the vehicles are on main roads. At the moment, we're relying on the goodwill of the owner. There only needs to be a change in ownership for that whole arrangement to fall apart at the seams, and I think it needs to be formalised. My village has significant issues with lorries, quarry lorries coming through, and I can totally appreciate the damage, destruction and inconvenience that they can cause to the villages. Large vehicles are not designed to use small villages, and I think it's appropriate for that to be conditioned and be included as a condition of approval if we go down that route. In terms of the need, I'd like to ask whether we have an obligation to safeguard our own supply whilst we're sort of considering this application, and whether that would be considered as a material consideration as part of our consideration of this application. The other thing that I'd also like to mention is about the property that's been picked up on by a number of speakers. We've been told, obviously, that this property is derelict at the present, it may not be in the future, and we obviously have a responsibility to protect the amenity of that residential property in the future. Again, each case on its own individual merits, but I remember going out to the one at West Epping, where we were told that that was obviously a temporary position for a set period of time. This is not sort of a temporary position that I can see from here, and will be in place for some time to come. So with that, sort of, could we just give a little bit more thought to that property and how this will affect that property in the future? But yeah, my sort of main point that I feel is absolutely non-negotiable from my point of view, is that we must have a routing arrangement in place. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. So in terms of the routing, that would be dealt with by a section 106, plan obligation rather than the condition. But clearly, that falls within the scope of the test for a section 106. So the committee were minded to approve it and request a section 106, then obviously that's something that can be secured. Again, in terms of, whilst the applicant has volunteered the information that they have done about where their markets are, that wasn't necessarily a requirement that they had to do. So they could have just said, well, we need this extension, and they didn't have to specify where that market is. So they've obviously chosen to do so. But, so how much of it is a material consideration? I think what we need to focus on is the Lincolnshire land bank. And whilst we've sort of concluded in the report that it's, it's close, very close to basically failing what it needs to do in terms of that 10-year, but that's based on our estimations of what the Lincolnshire's position is. Obviously, it's not possible to put conditions on to say, well, that mineral has to stay in Lincolnshire. We can't do that because, you know, it's, it wouldn't justify the different tests of planning conditions, and it would be extremely difficult to enforce in any case. So I think whilst the applicant has identified where their main market is, I think the focus needs to be on what the Lincolnshire position is. And the Lincolnshire position is that we feel that our 10-year land bank does risk falling below where it needs to be, and that's why we've justified the application, the need for this application, and the justification of the application based on Lincolnshire's 10-year land bank, not on Cambridgeshire's. Was there a final, in terms of the questions, I mean, again, in terms of making the recommendation that we have done, we have taken into consideration the proximity of that property. The fact that it's vacant doesn't mean that we've given it any less consideration to what we would have done if it was occupied. I suppose the only difference would have been potentially, we might have got a representation from somebody who was living there, but clearly no one does, so we haven't received that. But that doesn't mean that we haven't taken the same factors into account in terms of protecting the amenity of that residential amenity of that property, despite the fact there's no one living in there. And it might be that if it is, if permission is granted, then we look to sort of just reinforce one of those conditions, to put in some wording around what the standoff distance has to be between where that mineral extraction takes place and residential boundary to make sure that there is something tangible, that, you know, if someone's going out to monitor, they can then see what that distance is and measure it if need be to make sure that it hasn't been encroached on.
Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. Reading this report, the conclusion I actually came to whilst I was reading it before we were sat here, Chairman, is that, certainly my interpretation was that if the secondary use of this site was not in use, as it were, i.e. their secondary operation, that this wouldn't have come before us, because as councillor Carrington and others have actually already said, the report contradicts itself in terms of assessing the need for this material for Lincolnshire. In one breath, it says, "We have sufficient need, so we do not need it." And then in another paragraph, it says, "We don't." Without knowing the calculations exactly, and how much we are, shall I say, under the 10-years' requirement, and are there any other sites that we know of that are active that have this mineral that's being extracted or blown up to be taken out? This is very difficult to determine, but I must say, I do have a great deal of sympathy with what councillor has said around, whilst I appreciate what Mr McBride has said around, "We can't stop minerals and other resources going out of county." I do have a great deal of sympathy with the view that, yes, there is a duty to cooperate in the National Planning Policy Framework, that is a regional duty as far as I'm aware, not a national one. And Cambridgeshire is well outside of the East Midlands last time I looked. And I am growing increasingly frustrated, Chairman, and this is not a fault of officers, it's a fault of the planning system, where it seems that Lincolnshire is basically becoming the nation's dumping ground for various things, be it solar farms, wind farms, you name it. We seem to be being asked to give an awful lot for other parts of this country and getting very little in return for it, other than pain and difficulty. And it's becoming increasingly frustrating on that basis. I'm not saying we should refuse anything on that basis because that would be inappropriate, but the point needs to be made, Chairman. This is how residents are feeling, this is what comes across when these applications come before us at the minute, Chairman. And I certainly cannot clearly identify there is a need for, and that is the key, because there is no designated sites for this mineral in the plan, because it says in the current waste plan, mineral plan, that we do not need to identify sites because we have a sufficient land bank. So without knowing which it is, Chairman, it's very difficult to propose a refusal because I want to propose, I will only propose a refusal if I think we can win it. But it's also very difficult to grant, say, sit here and say, oh, yes, grant it, because the report says on one hand, yes, we have sufficient minerals, and in the next paragraph it says, oh, we don't. And as I said when I read the report, Chairman, my interpretation was the reason this came before was actually the secondary use that this company also operate, and that that was partly the reason for granting it, was to protect that secondary use and secondary part of the business, because it has additional benefit to us as Lincolnshire as a whole, but also the wider East Midlands region. So it'd be very helpful to get some clarification on those points. Thank you.
So just before you continue, I suppose, just to give you my three panacea, effectively, Lincolnshire does export an awful lot of materials to all the parts of the UK. If you take into account sand and gravel from the Trent Valley, if you take into account motorway construction around the UK, we do move a lot of material out of the county into other areas. But if you cast your mind back 100 years, and you look at how properties were built, many houses in Lincolnshire and properties would have had clay pantiles on the roof because clay was a local commodity. And as such, it could be extracted from the ground, it could be obviously baked, and the tiles could be created. But some of those properties, and even now, people have slate properties, and I wonder where slate comes from in Lincolnshire. So we also import product as well, so it's a difficult one. But Mr McBride, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not sure I can add too much more. I suppose, in terms of the calculations, the report, paragraph 107 down to 111, sets out some of the reasoning behind, in terms of the calculations. And the headline from paragraph 111 is, as we sit here today, we don't have a shortage. But what we're predicting is that with the rate of extraction and sales, very shortly, we will have a shortage in that 10-year land bank. And given the amount of time that it takes to basically bring forward and get permissions for the new mineral extractions, we're also almost saying we're a little bit of, taking a precautionary approach here to say that we're not at a deficit as we sit here today, but looking at how the extraction rates are going and what's left in terms of consents, we very shortly will be at a deficit. So that provides the justification that I think as officers that we feel is, gives the requirement to, you know, to approve the application based on that need argument. So, you know, there is obviously, we've set out where, how we've come to that conclusion in terms of where permissions have been recently been granted, what's left in terms of consent. But, as I say, in terms of the current extraction rates, we feel that very shortly we will be in that deficit. And there is a little bit of crystal ball gazing, you know, there's no, it's not the exact science, you know, it depends how the economy goes, it might mean that extraction rates increase more than we're envisaging, or they might not be as great as what we're doing. So, you know, we've perhaps taken that precautionary approach as well in terms of what we think we need in the not-too-distant future.
Right, I've got councillor Ashton, followed by councillor Skinner and councillor Carrington wishing to come back. So councillor Ashton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This, on the very face of it, is a modest extension to an existing limestone quarry. And as well we know, the extension to an existing quarry is clearly better than starting an operation from scratch in a new location. But listening to the debate and the points raised this morning, it does disturb me somewhat the basis on which we are or are not assessing the need for this kind of aggregate and everything which then flows from that process. Having just glanced at our minerals and waste local plan, the discussion points, paragraph 5.7 onwards, talks of East Midlands subregional apportionment for the East Midlands being agreed by a working party back in 2010. It also speaks of that working party and the whole regional structure behind it being disbanded shortly afterwards. But it does suggest of a, an approach to assessing need that went beyond our county's borders and quantified what that need across a broader area was. It feels to me that we will never genuinely be able to sustain a 10-year land bank if we don't know with any greater certainty than we seem to do today what requirements in, both, not just within this county but beyond its boundaries, we are being expected to fulfil. And I think there are perfectly sound points have been made, that we cannot be expected to keep every tonne of limestone in Lincolnshire for Lincolnshire and must never send any over to Cambridgeshire. But it would be helpful to know what we are expected to supply, what is expected to come from Lincolnshire over a given planned period, in order to quantify that need more accurately. I think the points that have been made in respect of the property nearby are particularly relevant. We have, as a committee, covered many different quarries in many different forms, but I'm not conscious that we have debated blasting in this context before. I would like, if I might be of help, Mr Chairman, to move that we defer this for a site visit so that the committee can go and see that quarry, ideally on a day when they're about to blow something up, so that we can stand, so that we, so that, should that property in question be redeveloped and lived in, then we've got a genuine understanding of what the effect of this extension would be on that property. I think it would allow a little extra time, as I feel it probably is necessary, to bottom out some of those arguments around need and just give us the reassurance that this is a need. And the one thing at the back of my mind on that need is that we are supposed to have a 10-year land bank, a 10-year forward supply. The purpose of the 10-year forward supply is to be the buffer. If we're, if we have that buffer, that reserve, then we don't necessarily need to extend it. Should we drop below that buffer, that need, then perhaps there's the requirement to make further allocations and further permissions at that point, rather than, if we are in the position of saying, well, we might drop out of the 10-year supply, we need to give more permissions. I just feel that, I'm not convinced there's firm parameters around where we wouldn't give permission in the future. But I feel that taking that opportunity to defer for a site visit would also allow to bottom those issues out for when it comes back. It would also allow, I feel, informal discussions around those footpath issues to be picked up, so that, again, there's a degree of certainty around these issues when we're coming, when we're bringing them back. But that's what I'd like to move, Mr Chairman.
I think that in view of you moving a site visitor, I'm actually quite happy to second that, because I think we've had a very active debate, and we've still got a couple of speakers left to go. But it will also allow that data to come together and allow everything to come forwards. Councillor Skinner.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I too am very much in favour of a site visit on this one, not just because of the farmhouse, but the red line comes very close to a major route, the A52. Although we have two byroads that frame it, I do, I would like to sit with some certainty that the explosive, Almo or whatever you'd like to mix up for the occasion, councillor Tom, we need to be sure that that's not going to damage the 52. We need to be sure it's not going to change, change the chain farmhouse situation. And I'm... not going to change, change the chain farmhouse situation, and I'm also, it'll help us assess whether the section 106 for traffic out of this is necessary. I feel it should be, but we need to have an open mind on this site visit. Thank you.
Okay, and before I allow you to come back, Mr McBride, I'll just take councillor Carrington's comments, and then we've hopefully finished the line of speakers.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman, and I will be brief. I was actually going to raise the issue of deferral myself, although for slightly different reasons to the ones put forward, excuse me, by councillor Ashton, but I think probably he was, he was getting there as well. And I would agree, Chairman, with the point you made and that councillor Ashton made, that exporting here is not the issue. We support exports in most areas of the economy. As far as I'm concerned, what the issue is, is what are the material planning considerations? So amongst the reasons I was thinking of for deferral, and we'll see if colleagues are happy to add these in, would be those issues of the planning weight, the planning weight of those various elements that are contained in section 102, the tension, and maybe it's us members getting this completely wrong, but I think there really is room for clarification here. The tension between on the one hand it being a Lincolnshire plan, and on the other hand we have references to region, well, how are we defining region, and does that include a major market? I appreciate they didn't have to reveal it, but they have done, so that's now a matter of fact that's on the floor, and the weight of things like the advice and the framework and PPG, which are not specified in the report, and the role of things like the managed aggregate supply system. Again, the weight of these elements in our planning decision, I'm not totally clear on, and I think we should be clear on, to be fair, to both applicant and the various objectors. So there is that package of issues around need. I also think that the distance from home, which has been mentioned, is something which could hopefully be refined if we deferred before it comes back to the committee, and I would hope also that at least a draft of what might in terms of a transport plan be contained in a section 106 could also be put forward, put before members. And again, all of those elements would clarify our ability to take a sound decision based on a thorough understanding of a comprehensive deck of evidence. Thank you, Chairman.
Vice Chairman.
I promise I'll be quick, Chairman, but on the site visit, please, could we actually drive the route as well? Because I think that will be invaluable to members who perhaps are not so familiar with the surrounding area, to see the small country roads that there is the potential for damage on, thus reinforcing the need for the 106 agreement. Thank you.
Okay, Mr McBride.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, just in terms of driving the route, so this would be the route that they potentially don't travel at the moment, but you want to, basically, to see if they do go down these narrow country lanes, what, what that.
When you put it like that, I accept it sounds a little bit ridiculous, but what we're trying to highlight here is the need to condition it because of the condition of the road. So yes, I absolutely accept, they do not use that route and are not sort of expected to, but I think to safeguard those routes for the future, it would be immensely useful for members to have the opportunity to see the route that they don't take, to confirm why it should be conditioned that they don't take that route. Thank you.
Right, so conditions 20 to 23 on the current recommendation do cover traffic, routing, bits and pieces. I'm sure that if we, if we agree to go on a site visit, because we haven't put it to a vote yet, we can probably organise that we have a look in that vicinity. Any further comment from anybody? It's been a fairly long, substantial debate over what seemed to be a relatively straightforward application, but I think it's a just and right and proper thing to do. Okay, so proposed by councillor Ashton, seconded by myself, that we go on a site visit. All in favour, please show. Thank you, that is unanimous, so therefore I won't ask for anybody against any extensions. That is the last item of business for the day. Just before we do close the meeting, though, you do note that within your various reports that have come through recently, you've seen enforcement reports and bits and pieces coming through, so I think it's worthy of mentioning that such reports do come through to members, and we do deal with things through committee on occasion, so I think that's worth saying. And the other thing, in a similar format to what I said to Jan, I'd like to thank the officers, Mr McBride and his team, for bringing applications forward to us, and yeah, justifying three quarters of an hour of debate on one application. There is a lot of work goes on in the offices, and the officers do do an excellent job. Andrew's relatively new to the organisation, but his minutes have been excellent so far. We'll have to wait and see to follow this. Andrew at the back of the room has been quiet, but generally the IT does work, so thank you, Andrew, and whoever else. And we have our new legal department in front of us, sorry, I can't see your name, but you've been with us, Marika, you've been with us for a couple of meetings, and you've kept us on the straight and narrow. I know Martha's not with us at the moment, but I'm hoping she's enjoying motherhood, and we'll probably see her again in the future, so thank you all. Merry Christmas, if it's not too early, because it is December, and safe journey home.
Thank you, Chairman, much appreciated.